All right, welcome ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna call the meeting to order and we're gonna have posted the colors by the young Marines. Okay, can we please have roll call?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Shaker.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Cafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Gurnell.
Here.
Uh Vice Mayor Armstrong.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Yep.
And our town attorney is present.
All right, introduction, presentations, proclamations. Proclamation issued to Supervisor Craig Brown for his many years of service and dedication to the town of Chino Valley and Yapai County and I'm gonna invite the whole council to come down here and do this with me.
Do you want a handheld or do you want this one?
I can do all this whereas and her forth goeth thou with. Oh, I don't know, twenty or thirty, and the therefore. All right, proclamation honoring Supervisor Craig L. Brown for his years of service. Whereas we express our appreciation to Yapai County Supervisor Craig Brown and honor him for his distinguished and dedicated service that spans over a decade. And whereas since taking office in two thousand thirteen Supervisor Brown in acknowledgement of his exemplary, exemplary, that's a big word. Leadership has served as chairman of Yapai County Board of Supervisors in two thousand fifteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and now in two thousand twenty-four. And whereas since January twenty twenty-three Supervisor Brown has served as chairman for Central Yapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, Sempo, advocating for the transportation and safety needs of the town of Chino Valley and Yapai County. And whereas, that's number four, a brief list of Supervisor Brown's many accomplishes, accomplishments benefiting Chino Valley and rural Yapai County. Interest while in office include keeping taxes low with a balanced budget, initiation of a large animal shelter for emergency evacuations, lobbying for a state law and establishing a county ordinance for hands-free driving, initiating and completing the new detention center. And whereas Supervisor Brown leaves an enduring legacy to the state of Arizona, the county Yapai, and most importantly, to the town of Chino Valley through his unfaltering leadership and inextinguishable advocacy which led to the acquisition of approximately seven hundred eighty acres at the north end of our town borders for what will become Arizona's newest state park. And whereas, I never did like these things. This land acqui- yeah, this land acquisition is important not only to connect to the outdoors but also to protect Sullivan Lake and the headwaters of Verde River, enable the extension of the Peavie National Recreational Trail and preserve history of immense importance to Arizona and the town of Chino Valley as well as a substantial positive economic impact and related tourism that will bring our town. And guess what? Whereas Supervisor Brown will be deeply missed and forever held in the highest esteem for his steadfast public service, his advocacy for Chino, I'm sorry, for rural Arizona and the town of Chino Valley, his persuasive, pervasive, public presence and tireless community outreach and his unwavering commitment to the democratic process. Now, that wouldn't have where as. Therefore, I Mayor Jack Miller on behalf of the council, citizens and employees of the town of Chino Valley do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Yapai County Supervisor Craig Brown and urge all residents and employees to join me in the town in congratulating Supervisor Brown for his outstanding service and wishing him many continued years of happiness and good health. In witness thereof, I hand to sign my hand, seal the town of Chino Valley, effects this tenth day of December twenty twenty-four.
Just a real quick speech, you know, I'm politician, so. Last twelve years has been very important in my life. And I've worked because I wanted to do something for the people of this area. I felt this area had been ignored for so long that we had to do something to turn things around. And District Four being the largest district here in the county, sometimes it's not easy to bring things to a new rural area and/or areas that are already being under development. So we had to find certain things that we could work together in partnership. And the council, Darryl Croft, when he was mayor, worked very closely on doing things that had to do with the highway and the roads running through it, the transportation system. I don't see the Romley's here, are they? No. Anyway, Yapai Transit is another big one, working with Sempo, Vinnie's up here too. And I just want to thank you for all the cooperation you all have given me in the past and working with good people makes it easy, so thank you. And they say turnabout is fair play, so this is certificate of appreciation by the Yapai County Board of Supervisors and I'm the chairman Craig L. Brown presents this certificate of appreciation to Mayor Jack Miller. Now Jack probably doesn't remember, but way back when I came to a fire board meeting here in Chino Valley, we still had meetings up over here where the old headquarters was, and you were the chair of that board. Yeah, it was the first time I came to find out what's going on in Chino Valley and boy, did I learn a lot. And anyway, recognition of your nine years of public service to Chino Valley Town Council, your dedication, leadership and public service to the citizens of Chino Valley and Yapai County. It's all been gratefully appreciated.
Thank you very much.
A new standard.
Thanks.
You didn't want the blank page.
I don't know why you didn't have all the whereas and go forth thou with.
I do that on a regular basis.
You highlight the whereas.
What do you got?
Yep, yep, Craig stand back up here, we ain't done yet. Sorry.
Oh, thanks Tom.
So, um.
Talk a little bit.
So we appreciate you a lot.
That's not working.
I adore this guy in case anybody didn't know. Um, so I work for the Chino Valley Area Chamber of Commerce is my day job. And Supervisor Brown is, thank you. You made me cry, so you know, I have not shed a tear. Anyways, Supervisor Brown sponsors a golf hole for our fundraiser. So, we just thought we would give it back to you.
Oh, great, thank you so much, Anne.
There's markers in the back, if anybody hasn't signed it that wants to, there's a backside too, there's real estate available.
Thanks. Again, thank you all.
Enough of this crying stuff. Gosh, I'm not done.
All right.
Oh my goodness.
Who's missing, oh there's John. Um, recognition of elected officials for the following years of service, am I supposed to read all these? Jack Miller, four years as mayor, two years as vice mayor, I'm not done yet. Please hold your applause until I wherefore go whereas. Three years as council member for a total of nine years of service. Annie Perkins, one year as vice mayor, seven years as council member for a total of eight years of service. Tom Armstrong, one year as vice mayor and continuing service as elected official.
Now we can clap.
Ah, I just walked up here.
Get in the steps then.
Is this another photo op?
It is.
Come on guys.
Eric's not here. Yeah, that's not, yeah.
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 Before long, we're gonna have to let the attorney in.
Nope.
No, this is for me.
Okay, I think we've got it orchestrated now. So, an appreciation, an appreciation award presented to Jack Miller. In sincere appreciation for your outstanding service to the town of Chino Valley as mayor and council member, we thank you for everything. We couldn't fit it all on here.
Do you like to say a few things?
No. You want me to do my speech like always?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We knew, we knew he was going to do that, so we prepared a little bit. So this, these four pages represent, we asked staff to send in the things that happened and were accomplished during Mayor Miller's term. And these four pages represent just the major thing. That we accomplished. And if you will have got your Chino Valley review today, you will see his parting, talk of the town as mayor in there. And that was one of the things that he said is that he has not accomplished anything, that we have accomplished everything. So I think that exemplifies Mayor Miller, but I do want to take a minute to take just a few of the highlights. I won't go through four pages, but the new police station came under your term. The state park acquisition happened during his term. The Make It Chino general plan that preserves our rural heritage has happened during his term. The Chino Valley Cemetery acquisition that will preserve that piece of our history in perpetuity happened during your term. There you go.
I'm sorry.
The only important here, but the Conex Box ordinance happened during your term. Um, the integrated water master plan, a five-year capital improvement plan first happened here during your term. A pavement management program was implemented during your term. And the updating of our zoning code that reflects Chino Valley's rural heritage all happened during Mayor Miller's term. Annie Perkins.
Yes ma'am. I'm not gonna cry, crying made me cry.
Annie Perkins, as it says, eight years of service, one year as, wow, vice mayor, it should say, sorry, I promoted you. And seven years as council member.
She was running things.
She was running things in background. An appreciation award presented to Annie Perkins in sincere appreciation of your outstanding service at the town of Chino Valley as a council member. And again, thank you for everything. And finally, well, finally, next, appreciation award to Tom Armstrong. In sincere appreciation for your outstanding service as the office of vice mayor, we thank you for everything.
Yes.
Yeah, I got one more thing before we do that. Um, Tom, I want to congratulate you or offer my condolences however you want to look at it for becoming mayor and that's from us.
Big shoes to fill, brother.
Oh.
We'll try it. No powder, no shaking, no nothing.
Oh, yeah, I knew that's what it was.
Look out.
Ah, the reign of terror begins.
And shortly later in our meeting, when we have the switch and transition, Tom will become our new mayor.
We're ready to do that.
Put that to you.
No, you still, you still got half the meeting to do.
Yes, we're done.
I've got all these people show up to watch this.
One, two, three.
Okay, we're done.
As long as all this stuff's over. Okay. Ow, okay.
Alrighty, item C, administer oath of office to town manager Terry Dinamy. And you need to introduce who's gonna do this, please.
I was very honored this evening, um, Dr. Harry Cole in the back, our pastor, he came and gave an invocation with council. And Pastor Amaretis, who has been our, with our congregation for a long time, is going to administer my oath of office.
Are you ready?
Not yet.
I, Terry Dinamy.
I, Terry Dinamy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the town manager of the town of Chino Valley.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the town manager of Chino Valley.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Uh, item D, presentation and announcement of the town of Chino Valley Parks Department becoming an environmental certified facility by the Sports Field Management Association, SFMA.
I'm going, this time I'm going to, I'm going to invite our facilities, grounds and facilities manager who is responsible for this distinguished honor to come up and join us. Jason Olsen, will you please come up?
In shorts.
He's got on long pants.
Pants!
And a collar.
It's a record.
Wow. He'll tell.
Big day for Chino.
See Bob, Bob, some people.
He'll tell you a little bit more about this, but I want to present, this is the Sports Field Management Association's environmentally certified facilities to the town of Chino Valley. Our parks have become environmentally certified and we are one of only two municipalities in the entire state of Arizona to receive this honor. And that's thanks to this young man.
I should do it while ago.
All right.
How are we doing this?
You want to? Go, go, let's go.
You're doing this?
And let's get comfortable.
Hang on.
This is a big award.
It is a big award, any more pants?
And he wore pants.
Nobody doesn't.
That's the key thing.
Thank you for the clarification.
Take your chairs down there.
Get their steps in.
I thought you got all your steps to me.
I did.
I just wondered where you stole the pants from.
Actually, I own a couple pairs.
Okay.
I just, uh, don't wear very often, I think so.
That's good. I was on the way by, but Sherry got away.
Alright, how are we all gonna fit?
With your big ass buck buck.
I have, I'm getting my buckle in there.
Please, so we can get everybody on this side of your dais.
How's this one?
Your attorney's trying to Photoshop.
One, two, seven.
Done. Congratulations, Jason.
About anybody else? That side or the other side, doesn't matter.
That way, towards the council, tell the council.
Alright.
Are you gonna talk?
He's gonna talk for a minute.
Oh.
Tell you how, what it took to receive this.
But I kept it under four seconds so you don't get bored.
Okay, good.
And no slides.
Alright, so first of all, before I get started, just want to point out that it says the town of Chino Valley Parks, um, not an award for me or anything. I had one member show up, Luke, so thank you. I have staff all over the place, also like to thank Cindy Thomas, she's the reason that I'm in the town of Chino Valley, cause she was part of my hiring committee when I started six years ago. So now, I'll get into this. How do I select slides, I just tell you? Oh, there we go. Perfect. Usually we have something else. I talk loud enough, okay. Alright, so this is what it is. How does it benefit our facility, um, I'm gonna get into a little bit. But really what it is, is it just looks over everything that's environmentally friendly. Um, it just kind of gives us a stepping stone, there's a lot of people in the public and a lot of people around, um, that don't necessarily think that we do things environmentally friendly, whether it's pesticides, water, we're wasting, um, resources and stuff like that. So, again, I'll get into that and then I'll talk about the process real quick. This is basically what I just said, and I believe that they have the full, yeah. So there's more than what I'm gonna talk about in your guys' packets, so if you have any questions, just let me know. Alright, this certification was developed to help document the environmental stewardship of the SFMA members and is awarded to those facilities that meet the requirements. One thing that I do want to say is as I got into this and started doing some of these questions to get into it, I realized it was more than just the parks, it's also the facilities and the aquatics maintenance side um, that I also oversee, um, even though it says parks, it's kind of everything that we do. So, the process, to achieve it, um, we had a, get an eighty percent passing score, certification is valid for three years. And at the conclusion of the three years, a simple form will need to be completed that validates that we're continuing to do what we're doing now. Step one, I applied, um, step two, I had to go through report card one and report card two. That's where I had to get the eighty percent and the first time I did it, um, there's twelve different categories and there was one category that I needed to work on um, in order to get up to the eighty percent. So it took a couple weeks, fixed a couple things and was able to get it after that. Um, after they scored it, so the big part of it was after all of that was done, I had to get ahold of the tester down in Phoenix. Just so happened it was someone that I used to work for, so it was easy to talk with him. But he basically just went through all the questions, went through everything we did and just attested that the way that I filled out report card one and report card two was truthful. And then they notified me within two weeks and did the process and they got this fancy plaque here. Um, report card one, I'm not gonna go through all of this, you guys can read it in your packets, but this was just kind of an overview of what they did. It was just the type of the facility and basically where we came from and what we're doing. Report card two is the tough part. So, we had to go through storm water management and the fertilization BMPs, which is best management practices. Again, I'm not gonna go through all of this, I'll let you guys just kind of view it for a couple seconds. If you have any questions, we can wait till the end. That's fertilizer continued and then the pesticide and integrated pest management. The one thing I'll say about the fertilizer and the pest management, as long as we went off of how the labor, labels tell us how we should apply everything, um, this part was easy. I don't think there was anything in this that we missed. Recycling, recycling was kind of easy, cause as everyone knows, um, we don't really have two different bins, we just throw it all together and the companies take care of it. Once all the trash gets out to where it's going. Um, the one thing, um, in some of this that the tester was impressed with is we do have a little, uh, decomposition pile, uh, or composting pile. Um, but we also give away leaves, we just gave away a whole bunch of bags of leaves to a lady at Memory Park the other day for her pile. Um, and we have been known to donate, um, tree branches and stuff to a local rescue. That's the composting side of it that I just talked about and the mowing. Energy conservation and the shop buildings and storage areas. Um, I have to give Matt Green a shout out on that one, cause a lot of that stuff had to do with his shop and what he does in the fleet department, cause we don't have a building. Um, irrigation, water quality and water conservation, you guys have heard me talk many a times about the ETO program we use, um, and that was a big part of this and this is exactly why we do things like this. It was a long one. Okay, landscape and open space. Uh, so the educational outreach program was the one that I didn't get the eighty percent on right away and had to go back and work on. Um, and it was basically, a lot of the big thing was just letting the public know. So what I did is I basically had this thing made and a sign and we're gonna post it at all our parks, so everyone knows when they come into the park that that's what we are. And as Terry mentioned, we are one of only two in Arizona and it just so happens I got my start in this field at Rio Vista Community Park. But I didn't, I didn't know they did it until I read that. And that's it, on my side.
Thank you, anybody have any questions for him?
I know you do, Jack.
No, no questions for me.
You sure?
Positive, I understood everything perfectly.
Good.
All fifteen slides.
But it was short, thank you guys.
Thank you. Alright, can we please have the call to the public?
Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is at the discretion of the council and not required by law. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes, yielding of time will not be permitted. The total time for call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date or responding to criticism. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated, this includes loud outbursts, profanity and disruptive discussions amongst our audience. I do have a couple mayor. First is, uh, Kristy Majors.
Oh, I can see over this. Thank you mayor and council and congratulations Craig Brown for your service, we appreciate you.
Amen.
Um, I am a resident of Haystack Ranches, which is out east Perkin. I am a resident of Haystack Ranches, which is out east Perkinsville, Perkinsville Road. Um, many of you may have traveled back, um, on the, on the Forest Service, Forest Service roads to the recreational area out there. Lot of partying going on out there. And, uh, mudding and shooting. Anyway, it's a pretty widely traveled area out there. I don't know, um, if you all got this, but we sent a letter to you regarding the El Paso Natural Gas Compressor Station that is scheduled or proposed to be constructed one-third of a mile from our northern border. Um, on, in the Haystack Ranches border. And so I just wanna read real quickly some information, research that we've been doing. This is a survey of airborne organic compounds in residential communities near a natural gas compressor station. It's done by Environmental Advances. I can email you, uh, all the, um, link to this if you would like to read further, but this is, um, just a short, um, synopsis of it. The residents, um, the highlights are residents living near a compressor station reporting, um, experienced or experiencing health effects from, uh, the compounds that are released into the air there. Um, they formed a committee, a community academic partnership to conduct a twenty-four hour air sampling, assessed indoor and outdoor air quality using Suma canisters and passive samplers. There were alarming levels of volatile organic compounds detected inside homes. And this is only one point two miles away from the, the station. Um, compressor stations are rapidly expanding and more research is needed. Our team conducted a twenty-four hour air sampling campaign to assess outdoor and indoor air contaminant levels at four homes near the Williams Salem Compressor Station in Jefferson County, Ohio. Among the three homes situated one and a half miles from the station, indoor benzene levels were two to seventeen times greater than the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency indoor standards due to vapor intrusion. Multiple other VOCs, which is volatile organic compounds, including ethylbenzene, tri, trimethylbenzene, dichloro, dichloroethene, is it over?
Yes.
Anyway, you get the drift.
Yes.
We're very concerned about this, and, um, we will send you this information on, um, your web, on your emails.
Please do.
Thank you.
Next, we have Frank Fusari.
Uh, thank you for letting me speak. I'm gonna go through this fast, and I'm gonna expand on what Kristy just said. My name is Frank Fusari, and my wife and I moved here two years ago to enjoy a quiet life without environmental worries in our retirement years and has established equestrian community. I'm a retired electrical engineer. We live second parcel south of proposed site location. I find it outrageous and unethical that Kinder Morgan would even consider constructing a gas compressor plant so close to an established community where emergency services aren't minutes away, and most residents have animals to raise and provide daily care for. I think the whole project is intentionally held under the radar by Kinder Morgan. Let's look at the facts. Sign from ADEQ was strategically placed on the wrong side of the fork in the road to not draw attention. No one sent me a postcard about project or knocked on the door. Even a well-known rancher that I was already leasing estate trust land for cattle grazing, grazing didn't know of the project. Yavapai County was also unaware of the project. Don't be apathetic and think this project as proposed won't affect the residents of Chino Valley. If you take the time to do the research, you will be shocked like me that this can have major health effects on the community. It will affect all residents and probably up to a ten to fifteen mile radius when they do what they call blowdowns. The Haystacks, as they are referred to, will no longer be desirable to ranchers for cattle grazing or recreational use to Chino Valley residents. Plan construction and location. Why here, only a third of a mile from the Haystack Ranches northern fence line? Appears Kinder Morgan is taking the path of least resistance to expedite their project schedule and minimize construction costs. They have other site location options, but we feel they are not taking them seriously because of commitments already made to potential customers. District representatives are helping us, but the conclusion is they are not breaking any laws. Plant construction isn't minimal. It's planned on seven to ten acres and consists of a five thousand horsepower caterpillar engine driving a large reciprocating compressor. There will be constant noise and vibration that will affect humans and animals. One has to ask, once they have a foothold on the site, how much more industrial expansion there will be? When asked why the site was chosen, we were given a false statement by Kinder Morgan that this is the only place where a gas compressor plant would be functional. It, it is interesting to note that there was an amendment zero point one in state statutes passed in twenty twenty-three to allow state trust land to be used for commercial purposes when it was previously used only for recreational agricultural use. History of gas compression station accidents. Bottom line, you don't wanna live near one. This was confirmed by the Kinder Morgan project team at our community me, meeting. When they have accidents, you will hear about them on all channels. Major fires with gas plumes rising hundreds of feet in the air may take-
I'm sorry you're out of time.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next I have Vinny Gallegos.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Vinny Gallegos, Executive Director of the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, or SIMPO for short. I'm just here to express some gratitude. Really want to appreciate you, uh, Mayor Jack, Vice Mayor Armstrong, uh, Councilmember Perkins. Um, i- if people aren't familiar with what SIMPO is or what we do, we're the Regional Transportation Organization. Um, in our area, we have about thirty-three elected officials. When you look at the quad cities, you include the county and the four cities and towns. Uh, regional work is incredibly difficult. We're trying to come around the table, build consensus, work with one another. And as I think of that work, whenever we can start from a place of respect and dignity, everything else after that can start, we can start really getting, uh, projects done. And Vice Mayor Armstrong, serving on SIMPO, has done that. My relationship with Mayor Miller has been that. It's always been from a place of respect and dignity, and I honor that tonight. I honor your service, the time of being able to work with you. And I'm proud to announce that the SIMPO Board just recently, uh, unanimously selected Vice Mayor Armstrong to be the Chair of SIMPO. And he'll be following in the footsteps of Supervisor Craig Brown, who's been the Chair for the last couple years. And again, big shoes to fill, but, uh, Vice Mayor Armstrong has been a great representative. He sits on the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council, representing this entire region to the state of Arizona for the needs of rural Arizona and the needs of central Yavapai. So, on behalf of the region, we appreciate the service. I look forward to the future with Mayor-elect Armstrong, and we're excited to be able to continue to work together. And the town of Chino Valley has been well represented, and I honor that and I respect that. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Those were the only submitted cards I had.
Okay, anybody want to speak that didn't fill out a card? Nope, move it along.
Oh, wait a minute, Carrie wants to-
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On, on behalf of my husband, the previous, uh, Mayor of Dewey-Humboldt, John Hughes, he was unable to be here this evening, but wanted to show his gratitude, um, and your support and your counsel as well, and Tom coming in for all the years that you have supported our town, and, um, your, uh, loyalty and your friendship, and, um, we are so grateful, just again, for all that you have done. And, um, you're gonna enjoy what you're doing as well as what John is, and so, um, we'll meet you outside the chambers, okay? God bless you, and God bless Tom coming in. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you.
Can I just get your name for the record, ma'am? Me.
Carrie Hughes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Current events summaries and reports, uh, status reports by Mayor and Council regarding current events. Uh, only thing I can say is that it's been a pleasure to sit here and, and work with these other six yahoos, I call them, or yahoos, whichever. Um, we've been, uh, minions, yeah, the minions. I know we don't agree with things at all times, but there was always respect, and, and that's very much appreciated. And as far as the citizens, it's been awesome, and and the repayment after our wreck in July with me and my wife, that was very humbling to experience. And very appreciated. So, uh, with that, I'll pass it on.
Just a, a couple of minutes if we can, just to recognize some of the people that showed up this evening?
Oh, yeah, I should've done that, huh?
That's okay.
That's why you're the mayor now.
Well, not yet. If you wanna jump back in there, you can. But several people showing up. I started to back very easily Darla with APS. Unbelievable amount of support. I- if you need anything done, both by APS or just by a friend, you can call Darla. Once you get through the aloha's and the hugs, you can get almost anything done. Uh, the lieutenant's from the police department. Nice to see you here. Glad I understand your chief of police is a little under the weather, and we hope him recovering quickly and completely. John Curtis, Chamber. Nice to see you here, John. Glad you're here. We'll move to his right. Elise, if I mispronounce your name, I'm sorry. Elise is the newest representative from Eli Crane's office. And she has hit the ground running, and we look forward to moving and doing things with his office through her as much as we possibly can. Our newly-elected supervisor, Chris, stand up, wave at us. He is, he is charged with trying to fill the shoes of Craig Brown, and we know he'll be fine at that. Who else is out there that I missed? Craig Brown, of course, we've noticed you.
The other lieutenant.
Daryl Croft.
The other, yes, the other lieutenant, I'm sorry. You were hiding in the corner, Amy, I'm sorry. Uh, of course, our water consultant, Mark Holmes, sitting there. We rely on him for everything.
Mister- Mister sixty slides.
Sixty slides. Former Mayor Daryl Croft, of course, we appreciate his service in the past, and he's been one of my mentors since, well, we won't go back that far. Yeah. Yeah, it's his fault I ever started this. He talked me into going to P&amp;Z seven and a half years ago, so. Uh, Chris Marley, former mayor before him, was also invited, was unable to make it this evening. Did I miss anybody?
Vinnie.
Vinnie, who just spoke, uh, is the champion for SIMPO. Uh, this chairman stuff is all a nice talk, but it's Vinnie that gets things going and makes it happen. If I miss anybody, I'm sorry, but welcome you all. Glad to see you here.
Okay. Bob? Amy?
December to Remember was awesome. Thank you, everybody on staff and town. Um, the parade was so much fun. Our town clerk was tasked with our float. Um, and we dressed up as Jack's minions, but unfortunately, he was sick, so we were just minions. And I was the evil purple one, so fitting. Um, but it was great, and the kids loved it, and, um, the lionesses and the donations of gifts, every child got a wrapped gift. And the looks on their faces was remarkable. And I was trying to help, but I didn't have my glasses and I had glitter everywhere. So I wasn't much of a help, but I got to see, um, the kids with Santa, and, uh, the staff was amazing. So, thank you. And where's Frank? I saw him earlier. Is he still here?
Marbury?
Oh, you're right there. Hi. I do need new glasses. Um, I was so happy to see Public Works in the parade as well. I was like, how cool is that? So, thank you to everybody in the town. And thank you to the town of Chino Valley for the last decade of my life. That's all I got.
Alright, what about Eric?
Mayor.
Eric, oh, is Eric here?
Yeah, he's in there somewhere.
Yeah, thanks. Jack, thanks for remembering me. I'm here.
Who are you?
What day is it?
It's the same day. Terry, welcome onboard. Looking forward to working with you for, for more years. Jason Olson, never seen him in pants either. Thanks for the presentation. Jack, thanks for everything for the last four years and helping me out with everything. You've been an awesome role model.
Thank you.
Annie, Annie as well. And I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. But you guys have been awesome. I appreciate it. But I'm looking forward to working with the new guys that are coming onboard. That is all.
That is all.
Thank you, Eric.
Alright, status report by Town Manager Terry Dennehy regarding town accomplishments and current or upcoming projects.
Well, I know Annie already talked about Magical Night with Santa in our first ever light parade, but I just want to add a few more things. Um, we always call Cindy Thomas and her recreation staff small but mighty, and it was amazing what they could put on. That event was amazing. It, we talked about it after, and she said there was probably more people there that night than in the five years combined before that. The, the pace, place was packed, the, the parade route was packed, there was twenty-one entries, there was food trucks. Um, it was, uh, light, the lights, it was a magical place just to walk around in the park, and they had snow machines. So she has created a new tradition for our town. The last I looked, I think the video of the parade had seventeen thousand views. So. Other things to share, um, we are, this will be our last council meeting before the holidays, so we just wanted to make sure people are aware of the holiday closures. We will be closing midday, uh, noon on December twenty-fourth, and then reopening Monday, uh, December thirtieth. So please plan accordingly. Uh, the other still going on is our annual December to Remember Parade of Homes. So if you wanna go on your website, have something to do, grab the kids and some hot chocolate, and it is, and if you haven't put your home on here yet and you're, you know, lit up, uh, like the Jetsons, then please put it on here and go out and see all the, it's amazing what's out there already, the decorations that people have to celebrate the holidays in our community. So it's a great way to spend an evening with the family. And then, um, we also want to support Annie's other hat, the Chamber, and John, and they are doing a Hometown for the Holidays Bingo Contest, um, asking people to shop small and shop local. So you can pick these up here up front, um, several places around town, fill it out like a bingo card and win prizes, but most of all, get to know and support, uh, the wonderful local merchants that we have here, right here in Chino Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, we'd move, entertain a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve consent agenda items five, A and B.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Did Eric vote? There he is. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six A, consideration possible staff action to approve resolution number two, twenty twenty-four dash one two six seven.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, staff would like to respectfully request that this item be tabled, um, so we can have a study session, uh, at a future date, um, that's more in-depth as it's a large financial decision. So we want to give the new council members, uh, coming onboard the opportunity to learn about this and understand exactly what it is we're committing to.
Okay.
Uh, make a motion to reschedule item six A to a date to be determined in the future.
Second? Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Whoops, I forgot to wait for you, Eric. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six B, consideration possible action to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-four one two seven seven. Who's presenting? Who's staff?
Oh.
Maybe so. Thanks for making my last meeting go smooth.
I told my family we'd only be here ten minutes, so, sorry.
Sorry about that. The item tonight is Delro Springs Historic Parcel Land Purchase, uh, consideration. I want to say that, um, Maggie Holmberg, our Economic Development Manager- I want to say that, um, Maggie Holmberg, our Economic Development Manager, was to be presenting this to you. I ask if you don't mind that we have a minute, moment of silence. She had a death in her, her immediate family and, um, had to leave the state. And if we could just, uh, give her thoughts and prayers to her, I know that her mother and her family would surely appreciate that. Thank you for that, appreciate it. Okay, so I will do my best to, to fill in for her, uh, and, and do her proud. So as you, in March of twenty twenty-four, Arizona State Parks and Trails acquired approximately, I guess it's really what ended up being about seven hundred and thirty acres with the assistance for Trust for Public Lands, which we will refer to as TPL after this. Yavapai County, the Nature Conservancy and the Town of Chino Valley in the state of Arizona. The purchase did not include the Fred Harvey Historic Building Portions of Del Rio Springs, that's in blue. The, the Fred Harvey Historic Parcel is shown in blue on the map to the right. It is infill parcel within the state park boundaries. Town of Chino Valley ownership, TPL approached the town about purchasing this historic parcel at a significantly reduced price. The property was appraised in two thousand twenty-four at five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The town is being offered the purchase price of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is due to two factors, a reduction in the sale price significantly by the owner and a generous contribution by a private donor who wants to see these buildings, um, preserved. We brought this to you in September and tacitly everyone on council was, um, in approval of moving forward and bringing a purchase agreement to you. But there was concern that in addition to the sale price, there would be known other upfront costs. And you wanted to have a good understanding of those before you committed to the sale. So we contracted with, um, Bill Ottwell of Ottwell Associates and he did an extensive stabilization report, which was provided to you in detail. And there are four main buildings, the dairy barn, the milk barn, the bunkhouse and the mule barn that are going to require stabilization efforts. And what that means is this is the amount of money we would have to using outside contractors, well-known, he went to the best, you know, for restoration to stabilize these until we could decide what we wanted to do in the long term. So it just keeps them from deteriorating. It isn't restoration, it's just stabilization, but it gives us the time to find other partners, um, other funds, donations, whatever we can, to decide what we want to do with the buildings long-term and how we might want to restore them. So the dairy barn, these were the five things that, uh, he said that would need to happen to stabilize this, this building. There was the milk barn, he had four here, repairing of the metal roof, windows, stabilization of the wall. The bunkhouse had three things that major, that needed to be done. The one thing he did say about the bunkhouse, I know, uh, one of the council members, when you drive by and you see the siding and thought, this isn't historic, this didn't happen, uh, when the other buildings did, but it actually did. They tried to restore it with a siding, you can see the red is the original. But when Mr. Ottwell went in, he said he was really amazed that when he opened and closed the door, that the building is still completely square. Uh, so this didn't, won't cost as much to stabilize as we might have said because it is in very good condition, uh, structurally. The mule barn is the one, um, it is the foundation, the original foundation is insufficient and unstable. It's not a full foundation and so there is no way to truly stabilize it and restore it. So there's only two options, demolition and hauling the items away, which is expensive, or fencing only for safety to restrict access. Um, stat will go forward on the cost, but that's what staff is going to recommend is the fencing. It's significantly cheaper, but also it keeps our options open. If we fence this, there's an opportunity for us to go out and see if we can find private partners. Um, there are a lot of organizations out there that do barn revitalization projects. And so they could see what it, it looks like, how it is, they could reuse the materials and potentially, um, restore this building to what it looked like originally. So by fencing it, not only is it reduces the cost for us, but it leaves our options open for the future. So the estimate stabilization costs, option one, full stabilization plan with mule barn demolition was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Option two, full stabilization plan with mule barn fencing only, takes that down to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight. And you can see the demolition cost was thirty-four thousand as opposed to just six thousand for fencing. And that is what we're going to recommend. Um, and then the caution is with all things, we were discussing earlier. Uh, you, you've seen this and Frank always cautions this with his, uh, his projects. You never know when we go out to bid, what they're gonna, what those prices are gonna come in at or how things will change. Um, and also there may need to be some contingency, so those things weren't factored in there. But on the other hand, we also know that all of these will have to go through our procurement processes. We also look to see what kind of, um, donations or if there are organizations that might do some of the work uh, in return for, you know, some kinds of plaques on site. So the staff will pursue all of the options to see what kinds of dollars and other savings we can have in these numbers. Um, but in the end, what this means, um, in the budget this year, you did approve, uh, two hundred and eighty-five thousand to go towards property acquisition. And that was just for property acquisition. We've been fortunate with the reduced price and the donation that that land purchase price has gone down to a hundred and fifty thousand. We had several pre-work contracts, we had an environmental assessment, we had surveying work, we had the stabilization report. That came out of that budget at twenty-six thousand, five hundred. And then if we're going with stabilization, option two, with just the fencing, that, the costs just for those services are a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven ninety-eight. So our total expenses for this acquisition would be three hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which is sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars more than we have budgeted. What we are recommending, oh, let's go back, and that would require that you do, uh, what we are asking the part two of this, is that there is a transfer of contingency to, to fund those stabilization costs. Tried to put that in perspective, so again, we went to, uh, our resident engineer, Frank, and he gave us numbers of what it costs to do, you know, roadwork is always the thing that we key on here because we know how important that is to us. So for that sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, we could get point oh four miles of road rebuild. We could be at one, uh, point one six miles of overlay. As you can see, it goes up as the, the type of surface goes up, pulverized and chip is, we could get about a third of a mile. If we're doing a single chip, we can almost get a mile of road. And if it's just a straight seal coat, nothing else, we can get just over a mile. Uh, the one thing he noted though, that with his larger projects that he's bid recently, mobilization costs alone, not construction, was fifty-eight thousand alone. So like the, our point, I think, in bringing this, you know, we may be giving up, we know our budget's tight. And if we do one thing, we probably have to give up something else. Uh, but what staff, the position staff is presenting to council is long-term. Uh, if we spend sixty thousand dollars on roads, we'll probably be redoing that in another ten years. But if we spend that additional sixty thousand on this, we're preserving a piece of our history for generations and generations. The importance of the land, uh, Michael Patrick, too, is here from the Trust for Public Lands, gave a quite an extensive uh, presentation to you back in September, but we just want to bring anybody that's new tonight up to, up to speed. The Fred Harvey Hotels and Restaurants are a major part of the U.S. Railroad history in the establishment of tourist destinations in the West. They were, they are considered the first restaurant chain in the country. People have probably heard of the Fred Harvey Girls. The Harvey Farm in Chino Valley provided eggs, poultry, milk, ice and other produce for two hotels from Santa Fe to Los Angeles. These buildings in Chino Valley on this site are the only remaining buildings associated with a Fred Harvey Farm anywhere in the country. We have several project supporters, they're all listed here, some have come to join us tonight. And, and I thank them for doing that. And all of these organizations understand the importance and want to support you in this action, whichever you choose. And hopefully that is to preserve these buildings and this land and this piece of our history. So with that, the staff recommendation is to approve purchase and, the purchase and sale agreement with TPL to acquire the historic building property for a hundred and fifty thousand and to approve a transfer from contingency in the amount of sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight to fund the emergency stabilization efforts. With that, discussion and any questions you might have?
Thank you.
Yes?
I know we went back and forth quite a few times on this project and spent time, uh, just the other day, was it yesterday?
Like yesterday evening.
And you, you had said that, um, you're gonna go outside the box and look for grants, volunteers and everything you can before we go dipping into more of the town's money. I know we have this money now. But to keep it from going into the next budget, we're gonna look for everything.
Yes, absolutely. In fact, uh, is Kay here?
Yeah, of course she's here.
Kay has already sent me about three or four emails with ten or twelve places we can begin to start looking for money. Historic, historic societies, all kinds of foundations, so thank you for that, Kay. And, uh, Maggie is going to be tasked with diving into those options when she returns to us.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Perkins.
How many acres is this?
Twenty-two point nine.
Twenty-two point nine one.
And the total cost for purchase and?
Let me go back.
Three hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Three forty-five, two ninety-eight, and remember that, that it was appraised at five seventy.
Thank you.
Tom?
Now, this, this is just an excellent opportunity to, to keep history in Chino Valley and we need to think about it that way. You know, I hate to bring out the extremes, but you can either have your children go on field trips to learn about history around here or wait a few years and you could probably find thirty-five hundred yuppies moving into houses out there.
Yuppies.
Sorry.
Absolutely.
Why did I call you? John?
You knew it was coming.
I think the land purchase is a great idea. I'm worried about the fiscal, we still have a couple more weeks before we have enough data. I think Katie, to look at our projections going forward. So I'm, I'm kind of inclined to stay within the budget at two eighty-five, purchase, pay off Ottwell and whatever's left, use, and really advocate and push and insist on a public-private partnership in lieu of just putting it all on the taxpayers' shoulders. Because even though it doesn't look like a lot of road, I'll take whatever improved yardage of road I can get. Because we have fifteen years of improvements to make. And every time we take fifty thousand here, sixty thousand there, we just slow that down. And there's a lot of residential roads that could use a chip seal and they would be very happy. You know, so I would say stay within our budget for this year, let Katie assess after the six months. Well, six months, we, it's at the end of December, right? We'll have a projection of what our budget's gonna look like with the twenty million dollar infrastructure fees that we're looking at potentially having to pay. We nearly ever sent, since we budgeted two eighty-five, I'm inclined, I'd like to stay within two eighty-five and not go beyond. And if, we can always entertain it later.
Okay, Jerry? Eric? Wake up, Eric.
Uh, I'm awake. Yeah, it's, uh, I, I agree with, uh, John, yeah. It's, uh, if we could find more grants, that'd be great. That's all I have.
All right, I personally have driven by that Del Rio Springs and been in those buildings since eighty-two. And I've always been upset that they are just sitting there going to heck. So, yeah, go ahead, take that, would you? Anyway, um, I, I am for it, I mean, and if we need to fence it now to keep it safe, then whatever the cheapest route is there, if people are worried about budget. And then, uh, I just think it's something we need to do and this is step one. Cause there's a lot of other historical stuff in Chino, like the old Mormon church, that I would love to see us get a hold of for somebody. The Historical Society or somebody, because those buildings are just gonna go away. Somebody's gonna buy it and put in a convenience market and knock it all down and it's gonna be a sad, sad day when that happens. So, I'm for it.
Can I, I just had a question. You said two eighty-five minus one fifty minus the twenty-six we owe for the consultant. So that would give us about a hundred and nine thousand dollars to play with, right? Roughly plus the closing costs, but minus some. So can you do a lot with a hundred and nine and a public volunteers helping, myself included? I mean, I'll go out there and pick up stuff and do whatever, but we gotta, we gotta find a way to do this with the public, not just on.
Oh, absolutely, we, we want to involve, and we've been, one thing about Chino, as you know, with all of our other activities out old, old manner, whether it's the compass shooting range or the equestrian center, that we have done very well with public-private partnerships. And we will look to continue that with this effort.
And even waste disposal, maybe the county can give us a deal and not charging us. We'll provide the trucks, you give us a free disposal.
The other thing that I did not put, we, we didn't have in the presentation, but it was in your packet, that we just wanted to mention again to you and to the public that there is one other parcel that we are, uh, will, have been approached about acquiring at no cost. And that is the climbing parcel up by Sullivan Lake where they do fire and rescue training. It's one of the last free climbing, uh, without bolts. And there's also petroglyphs, uh, but that looks like it could be fully funded and it would only be for us to take possession. So we will be bringing that to you later, but we want to make sure that you're aware of that now, uh, that that will be coming to you as well.
Very nice.
John, you, you had said something about a hundred and nine thousand. Well, according to what the, the estimates we got, both roofs could be fixed perfectly for eighty-four thousand.
Yeah, we, we, we found a lot of the, what's that roof called, uh, corrugated metal. There's enough to cover one, just what's on the ground. I mean, there was probably ninety pieces.
Yeah, there was, a lot of material out there.
Okay, anything else?
One thing, my apologies to Mr. Patrick and to Kay Luster for not recognizing them earlier.
Yeah, that's the way it starts.
That was your job, I.
And Mr. Ottwell is also here and the Forest Service.
Yep. So I guess we can entertain a motion.
Before we do it, can I just ask a question? So the motions proposing, as it was suggested in there, is there a way, I mean, is there consensus that we would want to stay within, within just the two eighty-five?
Not, not for me.
Not for me.
So you wanna, so you want to go to the three forty-five?
I would like to vote on what was, uh, recommended by staff.
The recommended motion, is that what you want?
That's what you wish?
And Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt resolution two zero two four dash one two seven seven, authorizing the acquisition of approximately two-two-point-nine-one acres of real property for the use of public asset and the related contingency transfer of sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars for emergency stabilization.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eric, did you say aye?
Aye.
He said, yes, he did. Okay, those opposed?
Aye, or opposed.
Nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Get out of here, Annie. Hey, we need to, do we still need to take a short break? Okay, good. All right, uh, item D. Oh, is that what you guys are here for?
C.
Do you say something else?
This is the.
Did I skip C?
Yes.
I want to go home, it's my last one.
It's where I see you.
I should grab the name tag, start to split up.
All right, item C, since you're gonna insist, Katie. Consideration possible action to, to accept the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, again, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members. Um, every year, uh, town staff works with our external auditors to complete our financial reports. Uh, our full financial reports are available on the town website, uh, for the public. And, um, part of that process is, um, a full audit required by state law. And Mr. Brian Hemmerly from Baker and Tilly is here to discuss the results of that audit with you tonight.
Thank you, Katie. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I know I stand between you and maybe the last thing you have to do. But, uh, I have a brief, hopefully brief, presentation on your audit this year.
There you go, see this?
We do issue, uh, a handful of audit reports as required by state statute. Um, the first of which is related to your financial statements. There are about a hundred pages, just over a hundred pages of, uh, financial data that we do, uh, go through and make sure are materially correct. And this year you did receive a clean opinion, an unmodified or unqualified audit opinion on those financial statements. We also issue a report on compliance with laws, regulations, grants, uh, contracts. We also issue a report on compliance with laws, regulations, grants, contracts, debt, commonestings of that nature. We did not have any instances of non-compliance that were determined during the course of the audit. And then, lastly, we did not have any material weaknesses that we discovered while doing the audit. Material weakness would be a deficiency in internal controls that we found while doing our audit procedures. We do provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct. We do not provide absolute assurance. The difference being absolute assurance would mean we would have to test every transaction at the town. What we do is we use statistically valid sampling, we test your internal controls, we walk through those controls, we observe them. And of course, we'd report out to you if we found anything during the course of those test work. Some items I'm required to discuss with you before the end of the presentation is any internal control matters. Again, we had no items that we noted. All your significant accounting items are noted in note one of the financial statements. All significant or unusual transactions were tested. So, we do make sure we test any significant unusual transactions. We had no reportable issues. We had no significant difficulties encountered during the audit, no disagreements with management, no circumstances that affected the content of our audit report. We are not aware of any outside consultation for the audit opinion, because it was a clean opinion. There were no uncorrected misstatements during the audit, and we had, again, no other audit findings or issues to discuss. We did not detect any fraud this year. We do look for fraud. We plan the audit to try and find fraud, but we do not suspect or detect that there were any, was any fraud at the town this year. There's an outgoing concern for the town. We believe you'll be here one year from today. And there are no material-related parties. Part of our presentation is that we do help prepare the financial statements. It's a non-attest service, and we also help with a few journal entries to make sure your financial statements are materially correct. The third report is related to the expenditure limitation. This is something that the State of Arizona requires all cities and towns file. It is filed with the Auditor General's Office for the State of Arizona. This year, the town had a limit of forty-five-point-one million dollars that they could spend. They only spent, you only spent twenty-nine-point-eight million of that limit. So, you were well under your expenditure limitation as required by state law by fifteen-point-two, almost fifteen-point-three million dollars. Some really high-level items for your financial statements this year. Your general fund had a fund balance decrease of about three-point-eight million. This is mainly as a result of transfers out. Those transfers out were for items largely associated with capital projects, a lot of street projects with your highway user revenue fund. Your actual revenues were actually four-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand more than budget, and your expenditures were two-point-three million less than your budget. So, you did well with budget. Highway user revenue fund is a major fund that you have related to streets, important fund here at the town. You had a decrease of a hundred-and-seventeen thousand mainly due to an increase in transfers out for, again, capital projects. Expenditures and revenues were favorable with budget. Revenues were a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand more than budget, and your expenditures were two-point-five million less than budget. Your enterprise fund should be self-sustaining funds, so their charges to the users should support the expenses in those funds. This year, your water fund had operating expenses that exceeded charges for services by two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand. That was offset by transfers of six-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand from other funds, leading to an increase in your net position for water this year. So, there was a bit of a transfer that needed to come into the water fund to help support the fund. Sewer funds had an operating expense exceeding charges for services of seven-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, which also led to a decrease in your net position for your sewer fund this year. That's my presentation. Again, clean opinion on all the reports. You met the statutes regarding your expenditures, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
How about questions on the side, Bob? Question, question?
Good job.
You did good.
Very well done, thank you. That's a big deal, guys.
It is.
Yes, it is.
And I'm glad that you said that's a big deal, and as Katie sits down, Katie Pell, our finance manager, is an exceptional steward of our funds, and we want to recognize her.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the annual comprehensive audited financial report and the annual expenditure limitation report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as prepared by Baker Tilly, U.S. LLP certified public accountant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, administrate, oh, this is my favorite one. Administer oaths of office to Mayor-elect Tom Armstrong and Councilmember-elect Eric Gurneo, Larry Holt, and Robert Switzer. You gotta go down there, bro.
Yep.
I get.
Yeah, give me just a minute. I'm gonna do them kind of separately this year, especially that Councilmember Gurneo is on the Zoom session.
Once you be quicker than I know.
Stay right there a little bit longer. Um, so, Councilmember Gurneo, can you turn on your video by chance for this portion?
I can, give me a second.
Get your clothes on.
Jason wore pants, we expect you to.
I'm wearing pants, shorts.
It's dark, so hopefully.
It's dark.
Okay.
Give me one second, I need to turn it light.
I mean, it sounds like him.
It does sound like him.
AI.
There he is.
There he is.
All right, so can I have you raise your right hand and repeat after me? State of Arizona, County of Yavapai.
State of Arizona, County of Yavapai.
I, Eric Gurneo.
I, Eric Gurneo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Arizona.
Of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
Councilmember of the Town of Chino Valley.
Councilmember of the Town of Chino Valley.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, congratulations. Okay, now if we can have the two new Councilmember elects join me up here, please.
I know, I was, who'd you rip that off, Larry?
All right, raise your right hands. Can you guys hear me okay? Let me come back this way a little bit. State of Arizona, County of Yavapai. I state your name.
I, Robert Switzer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Arizona.
Of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
Councilmember.
Councilmember.
Of the Town of Chino Valley.
Of the Town of Chino Valley.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
No, 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 Larry.
I changed my mind.
Last but not least.
I think, don't they come up? Yeah.
Your seats are open, gentlemen.
Bye, Annie.
Bye.
Wait a minute, Jack. Get out of here, too. I don't know. I've waited for two years for this one.
Last time I did this, it cost me thirty years in the search.
What's that for?
Sure.
Here we go. Raise your right hand, please. State of Arizona, County of Yavapai.
State of Arizona, County of Yavapai.
I state your name.
I, Tom Armstrong.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
Mayor.
Mayor.
The Town of Chino Valley.
Of the Town of Chino Valley.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I will.
I don't know, we still have an agenda. Not much, I mean, too.
Good luck, Tucker.
I thought I would tell you to stay here. Oh, that's not what I was told, but can I stay here?
If you come back to call to the public, I'm having the officer escort you out.
No, you're over there. You know what's interesting about this? Four years ago, two months to this day was the last time that Robert, you and I sat up here together on planning and zoning. So, I think Chuck Merritt is secretly trying to pad this council. Yeah, it was four years, two months ago, the three of us were on this together.
Thank you all for coming. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Switzer.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Holt.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Schacher.
Here.
Councilmember Gurneo.
Here.
Mayor Armstrong.
Here.
And our town attorney is still present.
Thank you. Item E, consideration and possible action to nominate and elect a council member to serve as vice mayor. My nomination for that position is Councilmember Eric Gurneo.
I'll second.
Do we second it, or?
Please.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Eric, you in on this?
Aye.
You gotta watch that hesitation there. All right, item F, consideration and possible action to approve the groundwater extinguishment credit purchase agreement. Mr. Holmes.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Members of the council, pleasure to be before you this evening. Uh, what you have before you this evening is a water purchase agreement for two-hundred-and-forty-two-point-eight-eight acre feet of extinguishment water credits. The purchase price is fifty-eight thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and twenty cents, or two-hundred-and-forty dollars per acre foot credit. I did want to tie in the general plan and our strategic action plan to this purchase. So, under the general plan, the new general plan, Parks and Recreation Natural Resources, the PRN Goal Seven is to protect Chino Valley's water sources to ensure that they are reliable and sustainable. Policy seven-point-three is participate in regional and local strategies, programs, and efforts to ensure sustainable water supplies in the area. And under the Community Services and Facilities, Goal Six, Strategic Plan Public Utility Infrastructure for Water and Wastewater to Support Growth and Development in Chino Valley. Policy CSF six-point-one is to develop and integrate a water master plan to identify near, mid, and long-term related capital improvements for water, wastewater, infrastructure, and facilities to support the future population contemplated by the general plan. And policy CSF six-point-two prioritize future water and wastewater infrastructure and facility improvements annually through capital improvement program. And water resources is a capital asset. So, the general plan also has CSF eight-point-five, require new development to be responsible for the installation and infrastructure extensions beyond what the town is required to cover that is necessary to connect to existing town water lines and any other infrastructure required to support the delivery of adequate water supply, underscore adequate water supply, to the proposed development. And policy CSF eight-point-eight, require all new subdivisions of six or more lots providing one-hundred-year-assured water supply per ARS forty-five dash five-seven-six. And again, this is really applying to priority projects you will be approving in the future. Just want to point out that a lot of Chino Valley lands are dry land, they do not have water attached, especially Old Home Manor, which is a very large piece of property, eight-hundred-and-forty acres. That's all dry land that will need an assured water supply. In the twenty-eighteen strategic plan, priority underwater resources to develop strategies for purchasing and increasing the town's water rights. And lastly, priority under the economic development, Old Home Manor creating developments within Old Home Manor. This will again require assured water supplies. So, at this time, the recommendation is town staff recommends approving the groundwater extinguishment credit purchase agreement with Alice E. Schofield for two-hundred-and-forty-two-point-eight-eight acre feet of extinguishment credits in the amount of fifty-eight thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and twenty cents. And with that, I would entertain any questions you may have at this time.
Questions for Mr. Holmes, Bob?
No.
Larry?
No.
Bob, Sherry? John? I'm amazed. I'll entertain a motion.
Tom, you forgot Eric.
Oh, Eric.
Oh, thanks for remembering me. Um, no.
Would you, I'll entertain a motion, since you're the vice mayor, now that's yours. He doesn't have an agenda in front of him.
I got you covered, Eric. I'll make a motion, we recommend approving the groundwater. What, you want to do it, Eric? Oh. I'll make a motion, we approve the groundwater extinguishment credit purchase agreement with Alice E. Schofield for two-hundred-and-forty-two-point-eight-eight acres of extinguishment credits in the amount of fifty-eight thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and twenty cents.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I believe the next item on the agenda is G, however, it is missing from my agenda, I believe, is to disband the Economic Development Committee. Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, I will stand in for Maggie, who could not be here this evening. But as it says in the council report, we had an Economic Development Subcommittee that would meet biannually, quarterly for Maggie to give an update to a select member, a smaller subset of council, on what was going on in the town and important projects. And when that committee was founded, there was others. We had streets and roads, but the prevailing wisdom has changed. And the preference of council that has been expressed is that all of council receive all of the same information directly from staff, rather than a subset maybe getting some additional information that the rest of you don't have. So, instead of the Economic Development Committee, what we are going to do is have Maggie come and give regular updates, at least biannually, to the entire council, just generally on the state of economic development in Chino Valley, what projects she's working on, what things are in the works, what the economic outlook is that she's seeing throughout the state. And so, for that reason, we are recommending disbanding of the Economic Development Subcommittee. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Any questions?
Bob?
I have a question. Can we do it quarterly?
Would you, yes, we could do those updates quarterly if that's council's pleasure.
I would rather have it quarterly.
Do you know how many times this committee has ever met?
Did Annie leave already? She was, uh.
Eric's on that committee.
I was on it. I think we can count it on one hand.
Yeah, I think a couple times. I think it was only required once a year, is what was required, it was required for. Okay, but whether that happened, I don't think. Yeah.
It would, it would seem to me that if you're, if you have a committee of community members, that they have input into it, that you're gonna get some ideas.
This was just a subset of council.
Okay. Thank you.
Bob? Sherry?
No.
John? Just, so, I'm sort of with Bob. When you say biennial, you're meaning like every six months.
Every six months.
So, I'm thinking at least three times a year, because including the budget, because we kind of need an economic forecast to predict a budget. Or make, so, at a minimum of three.
Okay.
But I like the quarterly one, too.
Absolutely. We can schedule those at your pleasure.
John, we had about, uh, it was about three meetings last, or this year, so, uh, three would be okay, or maybe once a quarter would be fine.
Yeah, just a brief update, really, just summation of where we are and the outlook.
Quick question. Madam Clerk, is that gonna change the motion to make? Because it does not say time or how many meetings, so the motion would stand as it is? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion with opposition number twenty-two-four dash twelve-seventy-six to standing and involving the Economic Development Subcommittee.
All in favor, say aye.
Well, I'll second, I'll second.
Oops, sorry. Oops, sorry, missed that second. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council.
Oh, now, now Aaron's up again.
Item H, consideration and possible action to adopt the twenty twenty-five base council meeting schedule, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so just in recent years, this item normally was on a consent agenda. There was a couple meetings that I wanted to draw your attention to going into next year, that'll be a little bit different than we're used to doing. Um, so the first meeting I wanted to draw your attention to is the August twelfth. Um, that's gonna be a canceled meeting because of the summer break, so that's kinda what we've been used to doing. However, because of the twenty-sixth canceling as well for the league meeting, we're having to reschedule the twelfth meeting to the nineteenth, so it will be a rescheduled council meeting, so we still meet that requirement that we, um, have in our code to meet one regular meeting a month at least. And then, um, the November eleventh would have been a meeting, however, that is Veterans Day holiday next year. Um, so, staffs or all of the admin, uh, offices are closed. So I am proposing to reschedule that meeting to the eighteenth. And then you'll notice on the twenty-fifth, that's a normal scheduled, uh, or canceled meeting because of the Thanksgiving holiday, so again, for the November, if we reschedule the regular meeting to the eighteenth, that will meet our requirement to at least meet once a month. Um, and I'll take any questions if you guys have any on that.
Bob? Larry? Bob?
Nope.
Sherry?
Nope.
John? I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you.
Eric? He's gonna do his motion, eh?
Okay, boy, sorry, I keep on trying to press a mute, can't get there fast enough. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five base council meeting schedule.
Second, somewhere?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sherry, still your job.
Oh, darn it, are you sure?
You're so trained.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
And I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.